I'd like to call the 37th meeting of the 23rd Council to order. Roll call, please. All councilors are present this evening. Counselor Peña may join us via phone. Is she on the phone? Not yet, okay. All right, so I would ask the Council to stand for a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance read by Counselor Winter.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Winter. So, good evening, everyone. Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from Council staff at the signup table. The Council will take a break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening if needed. We would like tonight's proceedings to be civil and respectful. Please do not make any personal attacks and no applause or other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we are respectful of one another. To that end, I want to say a few words of decorum and the rules that have been put in place. I believe that everyone has received a handout of the rules, but for those of you who do not, you can pick those up. There will be absolutely no signs, props, posters, or banners allowed in the chambers. Such material shall not be waived in any manner. Items displayed on the overhead projector must be removed from the projector at the end of the person's public comment. And there will be a two-minute time limit for public comment, which will be enforced. There will be no tolerance for disruptive public outbursts. There is an ADA accessible landing to the right side of the dais must be kept clear at all times, and the Fire Marshal will strictly enforce ingress and egress rules so as to ensure public safety. I will provide one warning to anyone causing a disruption. Upon the second continued disruption, that individual will be asked to leave the chambers and will be escorted out. So, with that, I will move on to proclamations and presentations. It doesn't appear that we have any this evening. And that would take us to item number four, which is Economic Development Discussion, which there's also none. And we are going to go to Administration Question and Answer Period. Do any of the councilors have any questions of the administration? Guess you guys are off the hook. Okay, let's go to our Journal. Item number six, I move approval of the May 20th Journal. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Yes. Any opposed? Nope. Okay, that motion passes. So, we will move on to item number seven, Communications Introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R-157 and placing it on June 17th Council Agenda for Final Action. R-157 is providing interim regulation on development adjacent to low-density city residential land use until the Phase II zoning conversion process is completed.
Okay, and this will require a two-thirds vote. There's a motion and a second.
Counselor Borrego, I'm sorry for the interruption. We're going to call Counselor Peña right now. If you could just hold on for a second.
Oh, okay, yes.
Okay.
We'll hold on for just a couple of seconds.
If you'd like to make a call, please hang up and try and...
Well, in the meantime, while you do that, I just wanted to acknowledge our Memorial Day weekend, and I hope everyone had a nice Memorial Day weekend. I personally visited the Veterans Memorial Cemetery in Santa Fe. It was really a beautiful site. So, I don't know if anyone else has any comments regarding that. Counselor Davis?
Madam Vice President, while we're doing that, let's see if this works.
Counselor Peña, you're on the air with us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We are on item number seven, but before I go to that, we do have a vote on the floor and a second, but I wanted to acknowledge Counselor Davis.
I'll just wait for announcements, Madam Chair. I was just telling.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second for R-157. Motion made by Counselor Winter and seconded by Counselor Sanchez. We need a two-thirds vote on this particular item. Any discussion before we take the final vote? All in favor, say yes. Yes. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so we will go to Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to move, I think the rules need to be suspended to pull P-3 out of the Finance and Government Operations Committee and place it on the June 3rd Council Agenda for Action. This requires two hearings. I guess we could do it by August sometime, but I guess it's better to do it in the first week of August. So, P-3 is adopting a proposition to be sent to the voters after November 5, 2019, regular election, proposing to amend the Article II, Section 8 of the Albuquerque City Charter concerning ranked choice voting.
Second.
Yes, Madam President, I just want to clarify that this doesn't need a rule suspension. You just need a regular motion and vote.
So, there's not, this is not six? Five, okay.
Does this require a two-thirds vote? No? Okay, there's a motion and a second to pull P-3 out of Finance and Government Operations Committee and place it on the June 3rd Council Agenda for Action. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say yes. Yes? Any opposed?
Opposed. No.
Okay, what was the vote on it? Counselor Benson, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. I move to pull O-54 out of the Finance and Government Operations Committee and place it on the June 3rd Council Agenda for Action. O-54 is amending the municipal elections ordinance to implement ranked choice voting.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to pull O-54 out of Finance and Government Operations Committee and place it on the June 3rd Council Agenda. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Five-four.
Well, what did Clarissa, did she vote yes or no? Because Ken Sanchez, Cynthia Borrego, Trudy Jones, Brad Winter, so five-four failed? And what about Clarissa Peña?
Counselor Peña, how do you vote on this issue?
No.
So, it's, okay. Okay, so that fails. The next item is Move That the Rules Be Suspended for the Purpose of Placing EC-407 on Tonight's Agenda for Final Action. EC-407 is the Mayor's Recommendation Award for Homemaker Personal Care and Respite Services, and this also requires a two-thirds vote, so I'll move that.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. And we are moving on to, let's see, Move That the Rules Be Suspended for the Purpose of Placing EC-408 on Tonight's Agenda for Final Action. EC-408 is Three Sisters Kitchen to Provide In-Kind Services for the Use of Commercial Kitchen Equipment Worth $3,800. So, there's a motion and there's a second. Any discuss... Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like for the administration to explain this as opposed to just going through and passing it. I know we have an explanation here, but perhaps the people watching or who care about a $300,000 expenditure would like to know what this is and what's happening with it and how it's happening.
Excuse me, Madam President or Madam Vice President, this basically puts us on the bill to vote on tonight. This isn't going to vote on the bill right now. We're moving to suspend the rules to place it on the agenda.
Okay.
I think it's, we could still hear from the administration if you'd like to address that.
Whatever, your pleasure. Okay, thank you, Counsel, Vice President Borrego, Counselor Jones. So, as the EC points out, this is a pass-through from the New Mexico State Legislature, but I would invite, I believe this is Carol Pierce, the Director of Family and Community Services, to come down and explain any further.
Good evening, Ms. Pierce. Director.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Borrego and councilors. To answer Counselor Jones' question, so this is a pass-through from the state legislature, the $300,000, $30800, $30800, and they asked for this in one of the previous state legislatures. So, what happens is we will develop a contract for this equipment, for a stove and refrigerator, and they are located downtown. They're really part of the economic development that's happening downtown to help people that are maybe starting a salsa business or something else, some kind of food enterprise. So, they'll use that equipment to test-market one of their products, and so the city will own that equipment. That's how that works, and we will develop a contract and monitor that.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Director Pierce, and I just wanted to make sure that people knew what it was because it's pretty ambiguous when we just go and vote.
And I appreciate...
And I appreciate that we got that money from the state. Those of you who did the work for it, thank you very much. This is a great idea.
Counselor Benson?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And yeah, Three Sisters Kitchen is doing some great work as far as just building out this entrepreneurial, small entrepreneurial economy of, we're a foodie town. Somebody told me that the other day. Said, "When I left here 15 years ago, we weren't a foodie town. We're definitely a place that likes to go out to eat," and so we're really building a small local economy around this type of work, and they're doing a great job, so I just want to give a shout-out to Three Sisters Kitchen.
Counselor Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Also, there was something in the staff write-up about a payback period. Is that, does that, does this get, I don't know how that works.
Yes, Chair Borrego and Counselor Gibson. Well, the way that contract works, we need to justify that large amount of money and how that's being used with the equipment and how the contract will say that'll be more or less paid back for the services that they're providing over a number of years. So, that'll mean how many, what's their outreach looking like? What kind of businesses are they helping? How many people are using that equipment to do, as the other councilors have mentioned, to build some other businesses?
Sure, and that makes sense, and I know that they do do great work, so I'm really glad for this opportunity to, you know, to expand on what they're already doing. But it just seemed, this is capital outlay dollars, I'm assuming. Is that correct?
Yes, Counselor Gibson, it is capital outlay dollars. If I'm correct, this was not, this definitely wasn't in this past legislature. It was even as far as maybe 2018. So, we've been working on this a while, and we're eager and hopeful for a positive passing of this because then they will need to purchase the bond for that money in July so we can get moving on this with Three Sisters Kitchen.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this particular bill, and it appears that we need a two-thirds majority of the Council. So, all in favor, please say yes. Yes? Any opposed?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did I hear? Oh, okay, thank you. That was Counselor Peña on the phone. Thank you. So, that passes unanimously? Okay, I need a, I move approval of the letter of introduction. A motion and a second. Any questions? If not, all in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Anyone in opposition? Nope. Okay, we are going to move on to item number eight, Reports of Committees, and there are none. Item number nine, Consent Agenda, and there are none. So, we are going to move to item number 10, which is General Public Comments, and we have two individuals signed up to speak this evening, Mike Alvarez and Sue Flint. Would you come forward, please? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm here to speak about the immigrants that we spoke about earlier, and a lot of people got real upset for what the verdict was, but I did a little bit of investigation, and we're not the only ones that are getting immigrants into our country. There are 16 other countries that are getting immigrants, but the numbers that we, that I came up with that was on the investigation was that UAE got 88 percent, Quatar got 65 percent, Singapore got 46, Saudi Arabia got 37 percent, Australia 29, Israel 24 percent, Canada 21 percent, Germany 15 percent, and we got 14 percent. Spain got 13 percent, United Kingdom got 13 percent, France got 12 percent, Japan got 2 percent, Brazil got 1 percent, China got 1 percent, and India got 1 percent. In the same token, China lifted their laws about having babies. If you remember, a couple of years back, China passed a law that you could only have one baby. If you have more than one, they get hit with a $500 fine, and they lifted that law due to the fact that their population is dying and also the way they live because young kids nowadays, including ours, are not following their parents' footsteps on how we live and how we do things. And another situation that came up while I was doing this, people keep on saying that if they're going to come to the United States, they're going to have to learn English. Well, I go to Mexico a lot, and their students there, their number-one priority in their language in the schools is English.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez.
Yes, ma'am.
I would also ask, thank you for your service to our country, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
We have, actually, we received one more person that signed up to speak, Ted Naminski, but before, Mr. Naminski, Sue Flint?
Thank you. Good evening. I want to say that in February, it's been 10 years that I've been coming into these chambers and sitting. The first three years, I sat over here, actually behind the police and everybody, and just observed because I just finished my book, and it's about how law and legislation was actually passed within these chambers. But what actually got me to come out tonight was my cat was shot, and when I thought about my cat being shot, and then shortly after that, the mayor said, "The decrease in crime," it really got to me because between our homes, there's less than five feet, and this man, this is his third time he's done this, and I've reported it, and nobody shows up. We've had drive-by shooting. I live in a private estate, and they're coming into my neighborhood, but it really upset me that we had gotten to that point, and it took a state legislator to say, "Hey, I was shown a gun driving down the street," and then all of a sudden happened. But one thing that I wanted to say is I'm really upset about the economics within our city and the way that our city has gone, and I've talked about this so much, about special interests, and I don't believe in special interests. I believe fighting special interests for every penny that they take from the public. I don't think that we should subsidize, and I don't think that this administration should be on TV all the time smiling when we aren't in a smiling position. I think that the way the city has done business has not been good for the people, and I don't say this because I'm running for city council. I said this for 10 years or seven years. My community has been affected, and there's nothing that I can do, and I have been diligent in going through the city process just to have them tell me that I am wrong, and I cannot understand how a public official can tell me I'm wrong when he never looked at one piece of document. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flint. I'm sorry about your cat.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, sir.
Can you enlarge it a little bit round below? Okay, that's fine, thank you. My name is Ted Naminski. Well, I'm doing something what I've been doing for many years already. Now, what I'm showing right here, that's Billy Graham publication. Well, that's his legacy, and still his family carry. Anyway, I'll come back to that. What I want to speak first about what's happened at last city council meeting, when this young little boy, close to the end, spoke about homeless people, what they're doing, what kind of destruction they created. Well, that time, I applaud, like so. That time, city cop, Gunderson, right immediately look at to Clarissa Peña, his head went up. That's right. He's governed, what he's doing, protecting government right here, he's not for the people. APD now, not for the people either, for special group only. Now, when come to Clarissa Peña, then I look at this Clarissa Peña, I never seen her such evil face. She didn't say anything but was enough. I have sought and possessed her simply. Now, is it that double standard? When Mexicans come here speaking up, they can speak also as much as they wanted. Other people have to keep it mouth shut, right? And that's what I do too many. I can't speak all go over too many. I come back to Billy Graham, that has to do about marriages and LBS and so on. We'll talk about it.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving along, we have announcements. Counselor Davis, do you think, do you have an announcement? Because it says none, but I think you do.
Absolutely, sure. Madam President, I just want to, or Madam Vice President, I just want to acknowledge and encourage the public to join us. On Friday, June 7th, at the Sunport at 3:30, some members of our, Mr. Sadio, who's on our City Veterans Advisory Council, is joining an honor flight for some Northern New Mexico veterans to go to Washington, DC to serve and to visit the memorials to their service in their last few years. And so, it's a New Mexico Honor Flight that will be returning on Friday, and we encourage the public to come back and welcome them and thank them for their service, and I thank you for your acknowledgement of our Memorial Day event last weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davis.
Madam Vice President, sorry, not used to saying Vice President. Yes, Counselor Peña did get disconnected, so we're going to try and call her again.
She got disconnected? Okay, so we'll take a couple of minutes to get Counselor Peña back on the line. Item number 12, there are no public hearings. And before we go to item 13, see if we can get her back on the line. Counselor Peña?
Yes?
Are you there? Okay, Counselor Peña, thank you. I think we got disconnected there for a minute. Okay, so I am going to move, on item 13, I am going to move EC-407, Mayor's Recommendation of Award for Homemaker Personal Care and Respite Service. There's a motion and a second. Is there anyone signed up to speak? No one signed up to speak. Any councilors have any comments or discussion? No? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say yes. Yes? Any opposed? No? Okay, so that passes unanimously. Item B is EC-408, Three Sisters Kitchen to Provide In-Kind Services for the Use of Commercial Kitchen Equipment Worth $3,800. I move approval. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Is anyone signed up to speak? Okay, they're all in favor? Say yes. Yes? Any opposed? No? Okay, that moved, that passes unanimously also. So, we are going to continue on to Final Actions, item number 14, and councilors, I would ask that we move, we rearrange item B because I know that this is, we, I think Counselor Harris has to leave at some point, so I'd like to ensure, since this is the item that's sort of the hot topic tonight, I'd like to move item B and make that item A and just switch item A and B around.
That is not to be moved. Madam Vice President, at your discretion, it can be changed.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Sanchez. Okay, so we are going to hear item B, Counselor Winter. Would you like to discuss this?
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and this is O-1963. I am carrying this by request from the administration, so I'm going to have somebody else make a motion. This is adopting a fire code prescribing regulations consistent with nationally recognized good practice for the safeguarding to a reasonable degree of life property from the hazards of fire explosion and dangerous conditions arising from storage, handling, and use of hazardous materials and devices, and from conditions hazardous to life or property in the case in the use of occupancy of buildings or premises, and provisions to assist emergency response personnel provisions of the code shall supplement any and all laws relating to fire safety and shall apply to all persons without restriction unless specifically exempted, repelling the Fire Prevention Code adopted in 2017 by ordinance, adding a chapter addressing cost recovery for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by Albuquerque Fire Rescue, providing for use of a fire inspection reporting system, and updating language to reflect more current terminology.
And Madam Vice Chair, that was a motion. He did all the heavy work, but I'll go ahead and move O-63 for approval.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. I believe that we have an amendment on this. So, does someone, would someone like to move the amendment? Counselor Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I have amendment number one to O-1963, and this amendment reads on page three, delete lines 12 through 30, and replace it with the following. A, in order to protect the city from extraordinary expenses resulting from the utilization of city resources in response... city resources in response to certain public safety and fire emergency incidents, Albuquerque Fire Rescue is authorized to impose charges to recover the reasonable cost it incurs in responding to specific types of responses occurring in connection with motor vehicle accidents and vehicle fires as stated in section 8401 of attachment A. And B, the fire chief shall have the discretion to reduce, waive, or otherwise modify any cost recovery request if a showing of the financial hardship or inability to pay is made. And number two, in exhibit A, the International Fire Code, delete chapter 84, cost recovery for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services, and replace that with the attached chapter 84 as revised. And basically, this explanation, this amendment revises the proposed AFR cost recovery program for motor vehicle incidents, responses by requiring cost recovery if incurred fees are greater than $1,500 and the incident requires a level-two response, hazard mitigation, cleanup, and disposal, any such fees will be charged to the reasonable party. The new program differs from the original proposed as follows. As proposed, level-one response, it was zero, as amended, it's zero. Level-two response is $400, it will be $600. Level-three response is 605, it will now be zero. Extrication will be, was 1305 as proposed, as amended, it would be zero. Additional time on scene was originally $1,400, it will be $1 per $1,000 of estimated vehicle value.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Sanchez. Is there a second on the amendment? Councilor Gibson?
I have a question.
Oh, you have a question? There's a second, motion and a second. Councilor Gibson.
So, Madam Vice President, is this the only amendment that we have on this bill?
That's the only one that I have before me, is that correct?
Okay, so I knew that there was going to be some modification presented, and what I'd heard is different than what this is. So I just wonder if there's someone from fire here who can-
Is there someone from fire who-
Talk about this a little bit more.
Counsel Vice President Borrego, Councilor Gibson, I invite Fire Chief Paul Dowd to come down and explain.
Right, there, from fire. Thank you.
Good evening, Chief and gentlemen.
Good evening.
So, Chief, thank you. And when I talked with, I don't remember who it was, but one of the folks from fire talking about this bill, and unfortunately, a lot of the confusion and misinformation that has been circulated, which I think we still have a lot of work to do to help clean up and explain to people really what this bill does. I'm a firm supporter of it. But more to this amendment, why is this better, why isn't making this amendment better than just saying anything over an hour insurance companies will be billed for?
So, Vice President, Councilor Gibson, basically, we actually looked back at some of the feedback that we got from the community, and we were aware of some of the concerns that they had. We take a look at the level-one, level-two motor vehicle responses that we would respond to, and we tried to simplify it. We wanted to make sure that the language is very clear. We wanted to make sure that people understood. We are not trying to bill and take anybody to collections. That was never the intent at all. The American Fire Service was built off of the ability to work with insurance companies. And just like in the early 1700s, when you had a structure fire, if that building was actually insured by an insurance company, had a fire mark on there, that's just the history of insurance companies with the fire service. The mechanism is already there with insurance companies. We were just trying to actually tap into that system itself. So, level-one motor vehicle accidents, there's no charge. Level-two vehicle accidents, we wanted to clarify some of the language, wanted to make sure that the community understood. This is not for every single vehicle accident that we have. We have other 8,600 vehicle accidents last year. We were not trying to capture every single one of those. But there are a certain amount of vehicle accidents that we respond to, that we have a burden on our department. And as you know, it's a very busy department when we stay on scene for an excessive period of time. To give you a couple of examples, which I provided a few of you today, there was a tanker rollover that we had last year, and we were on scene for 19 hours with several apparatus on that. Had we gone and had this cost recovery mechanism in place, we could have billed for $32,000 to recover some of those costs. Another tanker truck that rolled over with cattle in there as well, on scene for several other hours, $29,000 would have been recovered. This wouldn't qualify for every fender bender that goes on in the city of Albuquerque. But I think that we have to be responsible with the resources that we do have. And if we're on scene for an extended period of time, then we should have an ability to recoup some of those costs. Now, the regular vehicle accidents you get into, has an engine company that responds, has a rescue company that responds. That's typical for every MVA that we have. If they got on scene and it was a T-bone accident, for example, and I caused it, and another person was involved, there's a hazardous materials mitigation that goes on with that. Most of our vehicle accidents are cleaned up in less than an hour. That wouldn't be an issue. And even going over that first hour, you'd have the level-two response, $600. The engine for another hour is $600. The rescue for another hour is $200. We're still at $1,400 at that point. We're still not over the $1,500. But if it was a large hazard materials, I had to keep fluids from getting into storm drains, spraying microblaze on gasoline, so it's not a flammable hazard, that's going to be an extended period of time. I'd bring in a hazardous material squad for that. Then it could go over $1,500. We're probably looking at $2,200. And again, that's a lot of resources that are dedicated to an incident, that to be honest with you, is not an emergency incident. I think we'd all agree that AFR should be responding to 911 emergency incidents, mitigating that initial hazard, and then clearing to go on for the next call. As you know, we are a very busy department, had a 35% increase in our call volume from 2013 to 2018.
Thank you, Chief. And if I may, just one other thing, Madam Vice Chair. I think it's important to note, and you kind of hinted or mentioned it briefly, is that, you know, we depend on AFR to do spill cleanups, which you mentioned there. Any hazardous material mitigation and cleanup, these are from transportation companies who insure themselves for exactly things like this, accidents, spills. And I think that it's important for the city to be able to protect itself financially from exorbitant, you know, costs that are incurred when there isn't an insurance company who ensures exactly for that. So, thank you for your explanation.
Councilor Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I have a couple of questions. My first question is in regards to a disclaimer on the insurance policy. Did you do any research regarding insurance companies, if they include hazardous material, or they not include it?
Vice President and Councilor Sanchez, yes, sir, we did do some research. In fact, we had a number of documents. The US Fire Administration has put out a document in 2008 and 2012, and it's specifically for fire departments across the country to have cost recovery. There was also documentation from the International Association of Fire Chiefs, International Association of Firefighters, that also discuss from different municipalities, the mechanism that's in place from insurance companies. Again, it's there to recover it. And I think we had a news article that came out yesterday as well, with an insurance agent that expressed that, yes, that, you know, they would pay for those cost recovery and mitigation.
So in most cases, the insurance companies would cover those costs?
Yes, sir. That is, yes, sir, that is my understanding, that in most cases, they would. However, insurance companies aren't necessarily going to disclose all of the specific details that go along with that as well. But we have no literature that says that they're not right now, and nothing to dispute that. And I would say this has been out in the media for quite a while over the last week, and I would have think that somebody would have come forward and said otherwise.
The second question I have is in regards to the budget. At the last meeting, we passed the budget, and included in that budget was the $1 million estimated that you guys were going to receive. You were going to hire additional firefighters with that. I mean, now that we're going to reduce the amount of money based on what we're doing here with this amendment, what do you plan to do?
So, Council President, Council Sanchez, what we're going to do is basically, we're going to look at that in six months. To be honest with you, Council, I wouldn't be able to hire those new firefighters and put them on the, in the academy or on the streets, you know, anytime soon right now. We have a cadet class going on, we have a hiring process in a few months. The next cadet class is predicted to start in January. So I'd rather take this next six months and take a look at what we're actually able to bring in, and that would adjust us to see how many firefighters we'd be able to hire after that.
And I appreciate that, because we don't know what we will be, you know, collecting over the next six-month period. I think you'll have a better idea, but we did appropriate a $1 million for more firefighters.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Nair, maybe you can answer this for me. A little over a year ago, the city council passed an additional 38% grocery receipts tax. Can you tell me approximately how much money that brings into the city on an annual basis?
Sure. Council Vice President Borrego, Councilor Jones, that brings in about $53.1 million spendable, that's less the 1/12 reserve.
Thank you, I appreciate that information. So, Chief, on the face, this looks like a great idea. However, it seems to me that the citizens of the city of Albuquerque are paying an additional $53.1 million annually in taxes to the city for, let me see, if I remember correctly, no less than 60% of that will be used for public safety. How is it that we do not have the money in our coffers to pay for obviously essential firefighters and their equipment? And why would we increase a tax on, the majority of these people will be our citizens, even though it's their insurance? I don't understand how we can, sorry, Chief, do this in good faith, when we are already having an additional $53.1 million on an annual basis. Can you explain why we came up with this system?
Council Vice President Borrego and Councilor Jones, if you don't mind, it's a little bit beyond the chief's purview to talk about the budget in large.
I would love to have you answer this, Ms. Nair.
Great, thank you. So, we know that we want to hire 400 additional police officers. We know that that costs about $40 million. That's just salary and benefits, not including equipment or vehicles. So as we think about how we want to spend this $53 million over the next few years, we have to keep in mind that at the end of the day, we want $40 million of that, those recurring dollars coming from the tax revenue, to be available just for those officers. So then, if we just look at some of the things we've spent in the past two years, $6.8 million for AFR increases in the '19 general fund budget, $2 million in AFR increases in the '20 general fund budget, not including those offset by fees, $3.9 million in longevity pay increases to fund lateral police officers in FY '20, $2.3 million in additional compliance bureau funding for FY '20 at the police department, $1.7 to achieve supervisor ratios at the police department for compliance with the DOJ settlement agreement, also this FY, $1.2 million for PSAs, public service aides, also in fiscal year '20, it's part of our recruiting pipeline, $1.3 million for support staff to assist at the 911 call center in processing cases for the district attorney, et cetera. If we just look at those expenditures, which are not by any means all the expenditures that we've made in police and fire, that totals $59.2 million, just for these two departments and these expenditures. So, now, we haven't spent that full $40 million yet, because that's, we want to save that. So what we've been doing in the years, building up to that, is trying to invest that recurring money in one-time expenses, so that it will be available in future years for the recurring expense of additional officers.
If you'd like to make a call, please hang up and try again. If you need help, hang up and then dial your operator.
Excuse us for a second.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. Nair.
So, that's, we've made investments in one-time in things like vehicles, apparatus, crime lab equipment, bunker gear, so that we can still have that recurring money available in out-years. But the short answer to your question is, setting aside whether homelessness and behavioral health and substance abuse is or is not a public safety issue, setting aside whether after-school programs are or not a public safety expenditure, just in police and fire, we'll be spending all of that revenue.
If I may?
Councilor Jones?
Ms. Nair, so are you telling me in your budget, you specifically stated that the public safety money was used only for these issues?
In this year's, Madam Chair and Councilor Jones, in this year's budget, and our budget officer can help me with the number, but I think this year's budget, it's at 85%. But when we look at how we want those recurring dollars to eventually flow, if we were to fund additional firefighter positions now, we wouldn't have that money available in the out-years for the additional police officers.
Thank you. That isn't exactly the way I read the budget, but I appreciate your saying that. So you're saying without raising this amount of tax, which is what it is, this amount of tax for the services with the fire, we would not be able, as a city, to provide the additional firefighters and the equipment that the fire department needs?
Council Vice President Borrego, Councilor Jones, I don't think that was the original question. We can always choose to take money from one program and put it into another if you want to fund additional firefighters. But we asked all of the departments this year to be innovative and thoughtful about their budget proposals, and the fire department came forward with this proposal as a way to balance what they understand to be the public safety needs of the city, with an opportunity to raise revenue, which I would not characterize as a tax, that many other cities across the country have tried. And so, you know, we're asking the council to consider allowing this bit of innovation, because they came forward with a proposal that we thought made a lot of sense.
Councilor Davis? Are you done, Councilor Jones?
Excuse me. Chief, and Madam President, thank you so much. I want to come back to the substance of the bill in a minute, but I want to focus on this amendment for the current conversation. Chief, this amendment references, excuse me, your ability, or the ability of the fire chief to waive or adjust the invoices according to a number of conditions, but it doesn't necessarily outline that specific process in this ordinance. I know there's a reason for that, but can you tell us a little bit about the fire department's internal process for developing that policy?
Madam President, Councilor Davis, yes, I do have a non-EMS billing policy that Albuquerque Fire Rescue has drafted, along with City Legal, to actually explain that process. And if you look at the last section here, under payment, the very last sentence, "No individual will be sent to collections for non-EMS billed fees." This is very similar in the way that we bill for EMS billing. In fact, it's a two-page policy as well, so you can see we changed some of that language. And again, we are actually going after the insurance companies, because that's, the individuals that have insurance in their companies, that's where we're trying to get that money from. And it's not to go back towards the regular average person and take them to collections. That was never the intent.
Thank you, Madam Vice President and Chief. And so I just want to be clear, this is pretty consistent with the way we also do EMS billing in the city, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, Madam Vice President and Chief, thanks. And so, this is an administrative decision or administrative policy within the fire department. Hypothetically, I support this, and let me back up and say this. I think the department's done a really great job. I think Deputy Chief Eeks has really worked on figuring out the way to implement this in a smart way, and I applaud the fire department for responding with some of the consumer protection policies that I think are really important here. I'll talk more about, I guess I'm sure we will, about the policy. But I do want to say, like, if, I think this policy works, but if future administration could administratively change that policy internally, is that correct?
Council Vice President Borrego and Councilor Davis, that is correct. We have the policy in place, and if you have a recommendation, people can hear that. Yes, sir.
And, Madam Vice President, I just want to point out for this conversation, and I think for the future, you know, this council is occasionally, when we have sort of these high-profile issues or considerations of sort of city policy on big public safety issues, this council has weighed in and used our regulatory authority. We did it during the rape kit backlog, the sexual assault examination kits, for example. We passed a policy that I sponsored, and with support of the new administration and the old administration, that required APD to test every kit within 90 days, for example, to prevent a future backlog. That was an administrative decision of the police department, but we chose to sort of codify that through our regulatory authority, so that any future administration couldn't undo that policy without a public conversation. And so I support this administration and this policy, because I think they've addressed those consumer protection issues. And I think for those of we are concerned that perhaps we haven't gone far enough, or that we should revisit this in a few months, I'd like to encourage the council to consider that maybe, once we see how this works and get the tweaks worked out, that maybe we use that authority, so that in the future, in a bad budget year, a new administration can come in and change that administratively. And if we were willing to look at that and do that, I'd be more than supportive of ensuring this. And I'll talk more about later why I think this is right. But thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Davis. Councilor Harris?
Thank you. A couple of questions. One, I had some concerns that this would be used so prevalently or frequently, that it would raise the cost of doing business for insurance companies in the city, and it would raise rates and so forth. But is it my understanding that this would not be the sort of typical reaction to a motor vehicle accident in the city?
President, Vice President Borrego and Councilor Harris, that's correct. We are not using that for every single vehicle accident. It's the larger incidents that basically drain our resources for an extended period of time, for a couple hours or more.
And this might be a question for the city attorney. I mean, are these the kind of charges, basically, or the kind of coverage that the insurance company would likely be- company would likely be obligated to provide under statute? Do we know that?
Vice President Borrego, Counselor Harris, are you specifically referring to the changes to the code?
The type of things that we're going to be billing insurance companies for, under state statute on the insurance code, are they required to provide coverage for these sorts of things?
Madam Vice President, Counselor Harris, not specifically, but it is a general statute that allows municipalities to pass this type of legislation if the council is so inclined.
So if they do have coverage, well, let me back up. So the title of the bill talks about best practices. I mean, was there any investigation into best practices and what happens around the country in terms of municipalities and collecting these types of charges or seeking coverage of these kind of damages from insurance companies?
Vice President Borrego, Counselor Harris, yes, but I'll defer to and pass it over to Chief Dow to respond in more detail.
Chief Dow?
Vice President, Counselor Harris. Yes, sir. Again, going back to the US Fire Administration, it's Funding Alternatives for Emergency Medical and Fire Service, and this was published in 2012. There were several other publications that the US Fire Administration had as well. In that, it goes through a list, it's actually almost a 100-page document on different ways that impact fees, user fees, there's inspection fees, and one of those emergency response fees, hazardous materials, they give a fee structure as well, they give example departments. So this is the research that we did in going into this, plus there's other publications through the International Association of Fire Chiefs.
So is it fair to say that this is sort of the trend, or this is the standard above the cities that you've researched?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this is more of an argument than a question, but Chief can comment if he wants, is that if, in fact, this is the standard that most cities are charging insurance companies for the damages because there's coverage for these damages, then we could actually say that by not charging insurance companies, the City of Albuquerque is subsidizing them. So, I mean, you can look at it as a tax on the insurance companies, or you could look at it by not doing what other cities are doing, we're actually subsidizing insurance companies with our tax dollars. And that's kind of how I look at it.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. Counselor Winter?
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and I know that this is, there's been a lot of changes made on this bill, and I think there's still a lot of confusion. I know the emails I'm getting, people are concerned and confused, and I don't think anybody supports this measure that I have heard from. And I still do not quite understand, we're talking now about making sure that insurance company are charged, can you guarantee me that you're not going to send a bill to any residents in the City of Albuquerque that's involved in an accident?
Vice President Borrego, Counselor Winter, yes, sir, that's in our policy, it's specific. I don't know if you have a handout of that, I can get you a copy of that as well, but in our policy, it's very specific at the last page, again, on the Payments section itself, that no individual will be sent to collections for non-EMS billed fees.
Yeah, but I'm not talking about collections, so are you still going to send a bill to the resident? So I'm involved in an accident, just as a horrific accident. It takes a long time to be on scene, there's lots of cleanup. What's going to happen to that? If my insurance company fails, say they're not going to pay, are you going to send me the bill?
Madam Vice President, Counselor Winter, the way the internal system would work is we would set up a system of checks and balances similar to the EMS billing. If the insurance company is known and we have that information, we're the ones that trigger the billing by the company. It's not an automatic billing process. So we would identify what we need to submit the bill to insurance, if we don't have it, then we deal with it from there. But we could certainly put those measures in place where no individual resident of the City of Albuquerque would receive that bill personally, so.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that part. So what did you, on the public safety money that you received, what did you spend that money for?
Vice President Borrego, Counselor Winter, in FY '19, we had 19 new positions. So there were seven firefighters out in the field. There was two firefighters that were instructors at the academy so that we could teach our paramedic program, one of the few departments in the country that has its own internal paramedic program. We actually started our HART program, Home Engagement and Alternative Response Teams as well. We had some other funding to send our firefighters to paramedic schools, so we're funded to send seven firefighters every year to paramedic school. As you know, it's an 11-month course, and so when we take them out of the field, I have to backfill those positions. So that kind of pays for their overtime so they can get backfilled as well. So that was 19 new positions, and that's not including, I'm sorry, that is including the BLS program as well, which we just started that this week. We actually have three teams, BLS teams as well, and they're operating on two trucks, and they operate seven days a week right now. So that's a total of 19 new positions, just in FY '19.
Okay, Madam Vice President, two more questions. And so, what are you going to use the money that you received from this ordinance for? This cost recovery money?
Counselor Winter, the way we proposed that was to add firefighters into the field. It was 12 firefighters initially, when we assumed that we would bring in about $1 million. We know that's going to be less right now, so just like we talked about with Counselor Sanchez, we'll look at that in the next six months, see how many firefighters that would actually bring in, but the idea is to put those firefighters in the field. As you know, we have some staffing issues right now and some challenges. Working with the administration, we found a couple of hiccups that occurred over the years, and we've just, we've resolved those issues. But we still need firefighters out in the field. We've had a number of days on the weekends, we've had to force higher firefighters, and so staffing has been an issue in this department for a while.
All right, thank you for.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Chief, thank you for that explanation. So these 19 new hires, will they need additional equipment, and if so, where does that money come from?
Vice President Borrego, Counselor Jones, the 19 new firefighters from last year, we've already actually have the equipment for those firefighters, from the HART program, the BLS truck, all that was in the FY '19 budget, or we were able to get those funds in other ways.
I guess my real question is, the new firefighters that you are planning to fund from this, if, tax, if you will, that you're proposing to do, how many, how much, and how much equipment? Can you break it down approximately into all of those categories? And will you need any more rolling stock?
Madam Vice President, Counselor Jones, in the Fire and Life Safety Fee, there's an additional $55,000 projected balance from the revenue that would be generated. The total equipment cost for those 12 additional firefighters would roughly be $48,000. So we would use that $55,000 from the Fire and Life Safety Fee to cover the equipment cost for that, or the additional 12 positions.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other comments by the counselors, we're still on the amendment. Counselor Sanchez? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Jones? Okay. Counselor Sanchez, would you like to speak to the amendment one more time?
I already have, and I had a couple of questions that were answered by the chief. Again, I think we face some challenges because, as Ms. Nair said, we've got $59.2 million with just the two departments. But I think it's critical that when we look at public safety, we cannot leave out fire. Fire is equally as important as the Albuquerque Police Department. So when we need to look at increasing resources, we need to look at both departments, and we've got the resources available. I know he's trying to be as creative as possible, but we need to support a local fire department. And I just support.
We had a motion, and did we have a second on the amendment? We did. Do you still have Counselor Pena on the phone?
Madam Vice President, no, we have to call her back, if you can give us another minute.
Could you take just a moment to call her prior to the votes, please? And I apologize to the public, Counselor Pena is traveling, and so we keep losing reception, I guess.
And Madam President, there are two speakers for this bill, if you want to move to that in a minute.
Well, let's go, well, we'd like her to be on the phone to vote. So let's go ahead and do our public comment while we try to reach her. We have Sue Flint and Michael Shelton to speak on this particular bill. Would you like to come forward, please? Ms. Flint?
Thank you again. I am one of those people that had an extremely horrendous car accident. I've mentioned it once before when I was in here on Randolph. I was hit by a drunk driver head-on, and he was going well over 100 miles an hour. They were, the emergency vehicles and everybody that was there to take me out of the car and to stabilize me and to get me to U and MH Trauma Unit took over three hours. Move forward, fast forward, I had the man that hit me sue me because he had a headache. I almost died and couldn't walk for six years, but he sued me. And I had to fight with the city on a ticket to prove that I wasn't the responsible party. And so in this bill, I think about the legalities of it, of how you're going to enforce this, if there is any kind of discrepancy within the reconstruction of the accident, to decide who's going to be the responsible party. That's only logical to me to have to think about that, because my insurance company has already been asked this question and said that they do not cover this right now, and that's progressive. I have to fight for a penny to save through my insurance company, and I know for a fact, even asking them that my insurance company isn't going to cover this unless it becomes a state statute and not a general provision through a general statute. So I think it's more than what it is and shouldn't be passed on again to the taxpayers who have the tax increase, is seeing where their money is not being regenerated, and they're being asked for more and more every time we turn around. We want to support our Fire Department, we want to support APD, but there comes a point where you say, are you mismanaging your funds? We just gave you this huge budget, are you going to mismanage that? I think you need to consider the public more than you can, you know, the name change from Albuquerque Fire Department to Rescue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flint. Our next speaker, Michael Shelton? Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Councilperson's first meeting. I felt compelled to come down here on this one. And I, yes, we all want to support the Fire Department. As a matter of fact, Chief Dow stepped outside and spoke with me before the meeting began to try to give me some clarification. And I have yet to get clarification on certain issues during this conversation that we kept referring to citizens of the City of Albuquerque. I believe one of the things inherently wrong with this bill is that this needs to be applied uniformly and universally. We are crossroads of two major intersections, and the two specific examples that have been provided to you involve semi-trucks. As a matter of fact, even though I'm not an attorney, I would venture to say that if this is not applied uniformly to everyone on the roads in Albuquerque who passes through our municipality, there may be a problem up the line with this from a legal standpoint in the Court of Appeals. The two specific examples that were cited, one of those trucks was definitively from out of state. And Counselperson Harris, to answer your question, no, it is not the standard. And the reason it is not the standard is because many municipalities across the country right now are dealing with this issue for an additional revenue raiser, and you are absolutely right, Counselperson Jones, it is an additional tax. Let's be clear about that, it is an additional tax. Many states, while some municipalities have passed this law, there are states who have flat-out outlawed it. The reason Counselperson Harris that it is not the standard is because what's in the law, that if the insurance company is not obligated to handle this because there's a mechanism to send it to collections afterwards, that in and of itself says that this is not the standard, and they're not obligated to pay this. I think we all support the Fire Department and Chief Dow's efforts in this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have Counselor Pena on the phone? We do. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for amendment number one. All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No, it passes unanimously. So we will go back to the bill now, and Counselor Jones, you indicated you'd like to speak to this.
Are you ready? Okay, thank you. Yes, I still stand by what I said. I believe the Fire Department is being their great force. I support everything they do. I help get equipment, I mean, that's what our job is, we're supposed to do this. But again, I go back to, we just increased the taxes to the people of the City of Albuquerque by, according to Ms. Nair, right around $60 million a year. How can we come back, and this is a tax, and charge them now when they have an accident? And I'm, I can't prove, I have nothing to back this up, but having dealt with a few insurance companies, I cannot believe that an insurance company being charged a few hundred thousand, not a hundred thousand, a few hundred dollars, a few thousand dollars for this type of thing when it isn't standard, and it will not cause the premium on those policies to increase. I mean, insurance companies are there to make business, they're not, they're not there as friends of man, they're a business, and they have to make a profit or they go out of business. So I'm very uncomfortable with this, not because the Fire Department doesn't need more money, not because the Fire Department doesn't need more people, but because of the fact that we just increased the budget of the City of Albuquerque by almost $60 million income in the last year, and we expect to see that coming probably more in the next few years. I'm troubled by this use of the taxpayers' money, so I can't support this.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Davis had a comment, and Counselor Benton?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. If I could ask the chief or Chief Eeks, you know, I wanted to come back really quickly, I have one follow-up question that didn't pertain to the amendment. I just want to ask, so chiefs of the approximately 8,600 motor vehicle accidents in the City of Albuquerque, through your evaluation of this, is there a sense of how many of those are, this might apply to, in other words, how many are not Level 1, how many require some extraordinary response? Is there a sense of 5%, 10%, 50%?
Madam Vice President, Counselor Davis, right now, the mechanism that we use to track these incidents isn't broken down by this legislation, so it's something we would have to put in place once legislation is passed. But I think it's a fair assessment to say that somewhere in that 5% to 10% range, although assigning a dollar amount to that percentage is near impossible at this point.
Understood, thank you so much. I'm sorry, that's all my question, I just want to make a comment if I may, and then I'll be quiet. Thank you, chiefs. Let me just say, I appreciate that. I think, I think that's an important piece of this, is understanding that 90% of the calls that the motor vehicle accidents, AFR responds to, won't see a change at all on this, and 100% of the drivers won't be engaging with the city on this issue, their insurance companies will. As I said, I can sort of support this because I think the Fire Department came to the table, and the administration came to the table, hearing some concerns in the public, that the public wanted to see the details worked out, and this council did too, I agree, before we sort of adopt this and assume that the revenue is going to show. And I think you've done that. I think there's a model for this around the country. We've seen that quite, this will be applied to the responsible party in New Mexico, everybody's supposed to have insurance when you drive a car. If you don't, we have mechanisms to deal with that. But insurance companies, and even on KOAT yesterday, talking to insurance, local insurance providers, that said crash bills will not affect, likely not to affect good drivers. I think that's the message, and that's what I took away from this. I mean, just last October, as you pointed out, the city paid $29,000 to clean up dead cows off the interstate. That was not our mess, we didn't make it, but our taxpayers cleaned it up because nobody else would. We paid $35,000 to clean up gasoline semi-tanks built, to get our city working again and get people back to work. But somebody made that mess, and it's a lesson we all learned in kindergarten, which is if you make a mess, you're responsible for cleaning it up. That's why we have insurance. I don't have a problem with when we go above and beyond to provide specialized services to help someone clean up their mess, that we ask them to take responsibility for cleaning it up. And I think that's all that this simply does. And for that reason, Madam Vice President, I would support this legislation, and I think it's a progressive way for our city fire to continue to serve our citizens and ensure that they have the resources in the future to respond to our other 911 calls. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davis. Counselor Benton?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I am supporting this bill. I just want to point out that Albuquerque Fire and Rescue is taking on more and more, in addition to the heavy call volume that they have, they're going to be taking on our vacant and abandoned building situation as well, and I'm optimistic about that. That isn't directly related to this, but it just shows the kind of public service that the grocery receipts tax increase was intended to provide for public safety. Vacant buildings, as we know, are danger to neighbors and also potentially to firefighters. But I think Chief Dow's example of a smaller crash, not, still bringing out some good support from Albuquerque Fire Rescue, but not even reaching this threshold is an important one to remember as well. I think this really is, especially with the new version as amended, aimed at the bigger, more severe impacts on our public roadways by private enterprise or private individuals with their insurance companies protecting them. So I also agree with Counselor Harris's analogy that for these larger expenses that are incurred to clean up these incidents, that to not be incurring some fees on the larger ones would be a subsidy for insurance companies. Those are some good points that were made. Those are some good, good points that were made. I think we've got to, I do hear a commitment to evaluate where we are with this and see where we're going six months, six months from now. I don't believe that's written into it, or is it? It's not written into it, but I heard of a strong commitment that, that we can check in with, with the department and, and see how it's going six months from now, and these kind of things can be adjusted going forward, so I do support it.
Thank you, Counselor Benton. Counselor Harris, and then Counsel, okay, Counselor Sanchez? And then Counselor Gibson, and Counselor Winter?
I want to just thank Chief Dow and his staff for their work on this. I know it took a tremendous amount of creativity, and we can call it a tax, but again, I think it's important, and I think the statement you just made regarding 5% to 10% of those vehicles are dealing with hazardous materials. And again, now I think with the amendment in there and the $1,500, anything above that amount will exclude a lot more individuals involved in car accidents. And, you know, in the case where the chief has now the discretion to look at individuals that may not have the resources or the money, he can also waive those fees that was included in the amendment. But I feel we've got to, you know, work in collaboration together with the administration and assuring that the chief doesn't have to bring these creative ideas to the council, or basically, we can provide the funding. I know it's difficult because we are looking at hiring 400 more new officers, which is going to be a very expensive proposition because that's what the people in our community want. They are looking at, at a goal of 1,200 police officers, and we're now close to 1,000, so it'll, it'll be 1,200 in the next two years. So we've got a lot of challenges we are facing, but let's continue to work with the fire department, along with the police department when it comes to these very serious issues. And you also respond to a lot of the calls that are criminally related. I'm sure there's a lot of those calls that you take. And if you want to talk briefly, just quickly about that, you may.
Vice President Borrego, Counselor Sanchez, yes, sir. Like I said before, from 2013 to 2018, we've had a 35% increase in those calls, and we broke down the data. Our stabbings and shootings in the city of Albuquerque went from 384 to 652. That's a 70% increase from that time. I think it's important for the public to understand when we have a crime element, like we've had over the number of years with Albuquerque, and I know Chief Geyer and his staff are doing a great job, and they're trying to turn that around, and I think doing a great job with that in community policing. However, that gets lost a lot of times in, in the public, in the community. They don't realize that it's not just police responding to those assaults, the overdoses, the down and outs, the motor vehicle accidents, the shootings and stabbings, those kind of things. It's Albuquerque Fire Rescue. It's my firefighters that are responding to those. And a 35% increase, that puts us on pace to be running more than other departments in the Southwest. To give you an example, El Paso runs about 85,000 calls a year. They have 34 fire stations. We have 22 fire stations. We ran 110,000 calls last year. Tucson Fire Department ran 90,000 calls last year. Oklahoma City ran 70,000 calls. Colorado Springs ran 68,000 calls, and that's the only department that has the same number of engines that we do, same number of stations. What our men and women do with Albuquerque Fire Rescue is absolutely amazing, in my opinion. Assaults gone up 31%, traumatic injuries 53%, motor vehicle accidents 31%. Our down and outs have gone up 135%, and it's our firefighters that are responding to those calls. The rest of the nation is trending downwards for structured fires. We've gone up 22% in that period of time. And just like Counselor, you had mentioned before about vacant buildings, that's why I feel passionate about us taking over the ADAPT program as well. We had 36 vacant structure fires last year. Some of them caught fire six, seven times. Just on February 14th, we had a fatality in one of our vacant structures. We've had 16 vacant structure fires this year alone. Those are dangerous for my firefighters. The buildings aren't stable. We don't know what's inside, yet we have an obligation to this community, no matter who you are, what your lifestyle choice is, we will go inside and we will search for you as long as it's a tenable environment, but it's a danger to my firefighters when they do that. So crime does affect this community. I understand that. It affects this fire department as well, and our firefighters. It's affected our response times. From 2013 to 2018, we were getting the critical life-threatening calls, cardiac events, structured fires, strokes. It was taking us 6 minutes and 55 seconds. It now takes us 7 minutes and 55 seconds. We increased an entire minute from 2013 to 2018. Now, that still meets the, the national standards thresholds, and that's still a good time for many communities that would love to have that time as well, but I'm not satisfied with that, and I want to bring that down.
But we still have an ISO rating of 1, is that correct?
Counsel President Borrego, Counselor Sanchez, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Gibson, and Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'll go ahead and yield to Counselor Winter, and I'll close when he's finished.
Counselor Winter?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Chief, so the other issue that's on this bill is, is fire inspection fees. You're looking to increase fees to our, to the businesses in Albuquerque and to raise an extra $1.1 million. How did you come up with the cost you talked about increasing fees for fire inspections?
Vice President Borrego, Counselor Winter. So the way that we calculated those fees or got these fees is we called up similar departments around the, around the country. Again, one of them making Denver, Colorado, El Paso, Tucson, and so we, again, got their pay scale, and again, we were trying to be as equitable as possible, and again, also condensing the pay scale from a nine tier to a four tier, just to simplify it. So, and these numbers are the ones that we came up with that simplified it the best. So again, being in comparison to other departments around the country, they, other departments around the country, they had a flat fee of, say, $71. So it didn't matter if you were a small McDonald's, or you were a large superstore Walmart, you paid a $71 fee. Or in other departments around the, around the country, you also paid, so Tucson had $181 flat rate, where again, if you were a small business or you were a large business, you just paid that $181 flat rate. So again, we didn't think that was fair. We thought that's, it should be a tiered system where, again, the smaller businesses pay smaller, smaller price, and the bigger businesses pay a larger price. Again, so this, these are the numbers that we came up with.
So are you all using this to increase revenue also for the fire department?
So, so yes, it will be increasing revenue, and with that revenue, we'll be increasing the staffing in our plans checking division. As you all know, the plans checking division is one of the, if a small, if a business wants to increase their, their business size, or if they want to open a brick and mortar structure, they have to go through our plans checking division for plan review and file inspection. So again, this, this new revenue would again, increase the staffing to that plans checking division and improve the timeframe in which that we can get these businesses open faster. Again, time is money in all businesses. We all know that. So again, right now, we're having a timeframe of, for a plan review of within seven days. Again, we, they, you bring us your plans, we review it, give it back to you, and then you, you review it again or make the corrections and then bring it back to us. Again, we want to decrease that timeframe to as little as possible. So again, with this increased staffing, it should bring it down to two to three days. Final inspection, this staffing will, again, right now, we're at one to two weeks for a final inspection. We want to bring that down to three to four days. That's what our goal is. And again, by adding this staffing, we, I know that we can do that.
Thank you very much for that. And just final comments for me, Madam Vice President, is, you know, I, I understand raising fees sort of, but I think that's what the budget process is for. You look at your priorities, and you put the money towards your priorities. You don't just keep trying to grab money. And so, another thing is, is, you know, the number one priority for our citizens is public safety, and it is our responsibility for public safety, and that's why they pay taxes. And for what they expect, for their taxes to be safe in their homes, for, for response to accidents, and I just think it's the wrong way going down this road we're going down. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, so I think this has been a very worthwhile discussion. Counselor Sanchez, you-
That is Counselor Gibson will close.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Gibson to close.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Yeah, I agree, this has been a really good discussion. So I just want to mention one thing that Counselor Winter was talking about. It is, I agree, our number one job in the city is to do everything we can to ensure safety and security for the people who live here and do business here. Part of that is holding, is holding people responsible for their responsibilities. And what I mean by that is that these major events is what I kind of think we're talking about mostly here. Spills, rollovers of semis, hazmat type of situations, they should be held responsible. Why, I, I don't think, and I can defend this vigorously, defend not using taxpayer dollars to right a wrong that was caused by any number of things, from negligence to just being a, a, a real sad accident that has happened, that has caused potential harm or risk to, to the public. And yes, their, their insurance company will note that, and yes, they could get their rates raised, but that is the point. That's how businesses make decisions, is based exactly on this. So I'm very happy to, to support this, and I urge your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson. So do we still have Counselor Penya on the phone? Yes? Okay, good. So then I am going to call for the vote on this. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes? Any opposed? Counselor Penya, could you confirm her vote?
Yes.
Okay. So that passes on a seven, two? Okay, thank you. We're going to go back to item A under 14, final actions. Counselor Jones, would you like to discuss this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is amending the municipal solid waste landfill tire disposal fee. I, this is, I'm carrying this on behalf of the administration. I move it to pass.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and we do have one speaker on this particular issue. Ted Naminski, Mr. Naminski, would you please come forward?
My name is Ted Naminski. What bothers me mostly about this bill, people in Albuquerque don't even realize they're going to end up paying $15 more a month per household to attach to the trash bill, which is now $15.78, something like that. Yes, that's the way this bill was written, and I repeat, to monthly billing of trash. I check already with the servo, with the waste management and so on, and I got this number, they're not aware of that, of course. Soon, soon they pass it, that give them rights, proceed without any further, because this bill, that's the way this bill is written. So I want the people in Albuquerque know to be aware, not to be surprised. Maybe not big deal to some of it making 180,000 a year, but those who living on limited and also retiree with limited monthly check, $15, that's a month at that, $220 a year. $15, that's also me a month, or maybe two mil for poorer people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any counselors care to speak on this bill? Counselor Winter?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I've got some questions.
Director of Solid Waste?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So can you explain why we're increasing fees on this?
Madam Vice President, Counselor Winters, what this does is it doesn't increase the residential rates. What it does is it increases the rates for our tires at the landfill, the commercial rate for tires. The people that we sell to have doubled the cost of us, so really, this doesn't affect the residents. This affects all commercial vendors that deliver to the landfill, because the CRM and the other company that we use to send our tires to in Phoenix, that turn it into crumb rubber and use it for other materials, they've really raised the, the cost, they've doubled the cost of what we're taking it to, to process and to recycle our tires. We're not increasing it to cover our labor, or to cover our equipment, or to cover anything that we're doing. We're just passing on the raised price that they have raised to us.
Madam Vice President, can you explain, so, explain what happens with the tires? So when we get them, we have to pay to get rid of them?
Madam Vice President and Counselor Winters, yes. So the cost that we're passing on to the commercial vendors, they actually, when you buy a tire, they charge a tire disposal fee to you. We don't get any of that. I know Walmart charges five or $6. Other tire companies can charge up to $10 per disposal for your tires, so when you buy a tire, you pay for the tire and you pay for the disposal fee. All we're doing is passing on the fee that's been passed on to us to recycle the tires.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice- One more question. So when we do this, are the, I wonder if the tire folks are going to increase their fees?
Madam Vice President, Counselor Winters, I don't know, but I do know that currently, if they're a commercial customer and they have a six-yard bin or a four-yard bin, they can dispose up to 10 tires at a time without us charging them anything extra. And as far as residents, as a resident, you can go to any of our convenience centers and take up to five tires at a time for the $5 fee, so it really will not hit the residents other than if the vendors increase their rates.
Any other counselors? Counselor Jones to close?
Thank you, urge your support.
All in favor?
Yes.
Signify, yes? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And Counselor Penya, did we verify her vote?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to, counselors, what would be your pleasure? Would you like to go to item C or item D? Want to go in order? Okay, Counselor Jones, R. 139.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this is by request from the administration. R. 19139 is establishing one-year objectives for the city of Albuquerque in fiscal year 2020 to meet five-year goals. I move it to pass.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, and we have several amendments. I think we have A through L. Is that correct? Okay, so we have a motion and a second on this particular bill, and if you would pull out your packets, counselors, you should have a fairly substantive packet, A through L, and I guess our first floor amendment would be item number A, and this is Counselor Penya. Counselor Penya? Counselor Sanchez, are you going to discuss this?
Yes, that would be floor amendment number one to R. 19-139. And let me just read the explanation. Basically, this is a neutral amendment that rearranges fiscal year 2020 funding between programs for risk recovery and corrects the reserves for the lodgers tax fund 220. The amendment is necessary to correct technical errors made in FSR 19-138.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on floor amendment number one. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
I think that was unanimous. Any opposed? Item, floor amendment number B, and this is Counselor Gibson. Pardon? Oh, so we're changing it to, okay, I'm sorry. So this is floor amendment number two. Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Vice President. So on page two, after line 24, insert the following. Objective six, develop and conduct a survey to senior meals recipients to assess the quality of food provided and user satisfaction with meal delivery services. Submit a summary of survey's results to the city council by the end of the second quarter of fiscal year 20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on floor amendment number two. Any discussion? Be none. All in favor, signify by stating yes.
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 Any opposed?
Yes.
Motion passes. Floor amendment number two. So floor amendment number three is Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. On page five, after line six, insert the following. Objective 14, develop measurable and achievable performance goals for the civilian police oversight agency and board that are- police oversight agency and board that are in line with the agency's mission of advancing constitutional policing and accountability for APD and the Albuquerque community, and that enhance the success of APD's efforts. Submit a report on the performance goals to the city council by the end of the second quarter of fiscal year 20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Be none. All in, all in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Penya?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. So motion, that floor amendment passes. So we move on to floor amendment number four, and this is Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. This is floor amendment number four. On page five, after line 20, insert the following. Objective four, complete a salary study for building, maintenance, technical positions, including electricians, plumbers, and HVAC technicians to ensure that city wage rates and job classifications are comparable to other local governmental agencies. The study should include recommendations for reducing turnover in these positions. Submit a report to the city council by the end of the second quarter of fiscal year 20. And this relates to municipal development.
And I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Be none. All in favors, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed?
Yes.
Counsel Penya?
Thank you.
We are moving on to floor amendment number five.
Thank you, Madam President.
Counsel Davis.
I'm sorry, thanks, Madam President. Floor amendment number five, on page five, after line six, insert the following. Objective fifteen, prepare and submit a written monthly report to the city council of actual fiscal year 20 overtime expenditures for the police department. The report should include a status of the implementation of the recommendations outlined in the January 2019 APD overtime evaluation report. I move it to pass.
I'll second that also. So...
Madam Vice President, I have one question for the sponsor.
Counsel Sanchez.
What was the rationale for looking at doing this monthly and not quarterly?
Thank you, Madam Vice President and Counsel Sanchez. I think there was some discussion during the budget process about whether the administration's request for a million dollars for police overtime, as we increase the number of officers, would be sufficient, and particularly around sort of the new surge we're seeing in summer activity and additional work. And so the intent here was just to be sure that the council is aware of deficiencies in APD overtime before they develop. As you might remember, Counselor, last year, APD overspent overtime by several million dollars, and the council was not aware, wasn't informed of that on a regular basis. And we needed to make some budget adjustments at the end of the year last year. This at least keeps us a little more informed if we end up needing to make some additional appropriation.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I do have a question, Counsel Davis, and I did second this, but over time, would they, would that monthly possibly change back to quarterly, or would you consider?
Madam Vice President, I think this budget objective generally are consistent throughout the fiscal year budget. And I welcome Ms. Nyar to speak on this, if that's appropriate. I do know in conversations with APD, they've had their own directives, and we may, we've heard a little about that, that the police leadership is now giving each area commander and every commander a directive and a budget sort of for their own overtime that they're now monitoring on a monthly basis. And so this is consistent with the way the police department is budgeting itself, and I think is the budget administration, budget authority. To me, it feels better that we're aware of that. I mean, we'll be a month or two behind.
Ms. Nyar, would you care to?
Sure. Counsel Vice President Borrego, Counselor Davis, I meet with APD weekly on overtime. I'm happy to roll that up in whatever frequency you'd like.
That was a great answer. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes. And I just note for the record that Counseler Winter is not in the room. Counsel Penya?
Yes.
Okay, it passes unanimously with the counselors in the room. Counselors, we're moving on to floor amendment number six, and Counsel Davis?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Floor amendment number six reads as follows. On page eight, after line 10, insert the following. Objective number five, explore options for modernizing the distribution of neighborhood parking passes through an online system and develop a plan for implementation, including estimated cost. Submit a report of findings to the city council by the end of the second quarter of FY 20. I'll explain this a little bit if we need to.
Yes, Counsel.
Counsel Davis, just explain to me what neighborhood parking passes are and whether you'd ask. Thank you.
And I need a second when we get done with this. Thank you. I think Counsel Benton and I are the only ones that deal with this. Neighborhood parking passes essentially are zones that are petitioned by the neighborhood where they get a special pass. Around U and M, for example, to keep students from parking in residential areas where there's limited parking in our older neighborhoods, there's a special permit that residents get to put on their car to show that they live in the neighborhood, and that the parking enforcement can keep non-residents from taking up residential parking spaces. It's really important in older neighborhoods where we don't have garages and driveways, and street parking sort of comes with the home. This not, as it happens right now, residents have to come downtown to get their passes every year. DMD is already working towards an online system to allow residents to sign on, petition, and print their permits. This just simply sort of says we want to stay on top of that and bring us the appropriation for it when it's ready.
Counsel Benton, you second this?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? Counsel Penya?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. So we are on floor amendment number seven, and this is Counsel Benton.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Floor amendment number seven reads as follows. On page five, after line 20, insert the following. Objective five, increase the grade and/or pay levels of current vacant senior engineer and project manager positions to make them more competitive with other local public agencies and private firms. Postpone filling existing positions until such increases are in place and funding is identified. Update SharePoint with status report by the end of the second quarter of FY 20. And this would be within the Department of Municipal Development. And really, the objective speaks for itself. We are having difficulty keeping some of our eager, younger, more qualified engineers in the department. We lost one just recently, I know, to Sandia Labs. I know it's hard for us to, to stay competitive in these positions, and this is, this is dealing just with vacant positions. So, and trying to see if, what it's going to take to, to compete and, and have a robust engineering component within DMD.
Counsel Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I do support this, but I'm concerned that we would not fill vacant positions when we are losing positions. I think we're sending the wrong message. I know that we need to increase these salaries because we are losing people, but if we're posting these positions, we need to post them and make sure we fill these positions. So it's kind of a catch-22, I think, with this amendment.
Madam, Madam Vice President, I'd like to hear from administration on it, but I do feel that, that the, there are two vacancies. We did take a look at this during the operating budget, and we're trying to increase the pay for these positions. My concern is that we continue to, to hire less qualified and junior kind of personnel. We need some, some strong senior personnel.
But I also say that people who are seeking, that are working for the city are coming in not just because of the salary, but also because of the benefits. I mean, thirty-three point three percent of their salary is, is going towards additional benefits. And I think it's a real incentive for people to come to work for the city. But to say we're going to postpone filling existing positions, I have problems with when we're losing these positions.
Counsel Gibson, before we go to you, I wanted to see if the administration wanted to respond to Counsel Benton.
Madam Vice Chair, and both Counsel Benton and Counsel Sanchez, you both make good points. Obviously, we are trying to recruit people to the city in these positions. But the other side of this is that we have a lot of work that needs to get out the door, and by not filling positions, you can't get the work done. We would obviously understand what the goal here is, and we've had this conversation during the budget process that we need to, when we reclassify a position and to increase the pay, we've got to, not only consider what happens within the organization, but we also got to look at our HR process to make sure that sometimes it's the wrong vacant position that's vacant. For example, you may have a senior engineer position, but you have a vacant entry-level engineer, and so they're not comparable. So you, you're actually overspending your budget if you try and upgrade the position to get a senior engineer. So the, the spirit of the amendment is, we understand and we agree. I think the process, by how it gets done, is, is a little too prescriptive in the amendment. And so if, we might just suggest that, that we should look at the pay of, of the employees in these positions, and the administration should work to, to make the positions more competitive. We can do that, but I think leaving positions vacant creates the same issue that we're really trying to solve, and that is that we can't get the projects out the door.
Counsel Gibson?
So I agree. You know, we, we can't get projects online without engineers. But, and I was really appalled when I found out how, how poorly we stack up with other agencies here in Albuquerque in payment for engineers, even with the proposed, with amendment, budget amendment that we had, which would have resulted in a 10% increase in pay. We were still not even within shouting distance of what the water utility, authority, or county pays engineers. So I think we have a long way to go to catch up, and anything we can do to get there. So I remember that the administration said, oh, we'll handle this, we'll handle this. You know, we don't need to, don't need this in the budget. So how are we handling it? How, how are we going to recruit and keep engineers? We've lost, what, three in the past, I don't know, recent months, six months or something like that, year, whatever it was? How is, how are we going to stop doing that unless we give them more compensation? And when are we going to give them more compensation?
Madam Vice Chair and Counsel Gibson, the way we do this internally is, we do hold the positions that are vacant open to get the salary savings, to, to be able to increase the pay for the particular positions. Right now, what we're doing is, the department is reviewing all those positions in, in those classifications to see how we might be able to perhaps, if you will, double up on a couple of positions to increase the salaries on those. But the fact of the matter is, it does come down to what our positions, what positions become vacant at what point in time. And we are specifically trying to, to look at how we manage those, those dollars in those positions. So for example, again, a senior-level engineer position that may be, that may be vacant, you might be able to get a couple of really good junior engineers with that salary level. On the other hand, if you have vacant junior positions and you're trying to fill a senior position, we may not have enough funding in the budget to do that. But we need to balance that within the administration. And we'd be happy to come back and, and visit with the council as we move through the course of the year in, in terms of how we're doing with that process. But to do it this way, I think is so prescriptive that it does tie our hands, and it does create the issues that I described earlier.
Okay, but still, my question is, what's your plan? What are you going to do?
Madam Vice Chair, Counsel Gibson, we're going to look at all the positions in the department that are engineering-related positions. We're going to do an assessment to see what kind of competitive payments are made by other departments, for example, the private sector and other city, state departments and other communities across the state, to determine whether or not we can increase the, the entry-level levels for these positions with the existing budget that we have.
Well, I would suggest to you, and I'm going to state the obvious, that we already know the answers to those questions because of the exodus from, from, from DMD. So it sounds to me like y'all are kicking the can down the road. I don't need to hear anything more. Thank you.
Counsel Benton?
So I think the, what we're hung up on here is the sentence that I added at the last minute, which says postpone filling existing positions. So I think if we strike that, then that's the intent. And, and we recognize that, that this is a Rubik's Cube sometimes, you know. But, but I do share serious concerns, which is why I brought this forward, that, that we're able to move projects forward. And I'm just going to say that, that, hey, I love junior people that are, that are wanting to come up and get involved, but some experience out in the, in the real world is really what we need to do cost control, some of the things that are so important to the city, to, to do cost control and schedule control on some of these projects. So I would propose eliminating that sentence that reads postpone filling existing position until such increases are in place and funding is identified.
So we have an amendment to the amendment, and Counsel Benton is striking postpone filling existing positions until such increases are in place and funding is identifiable. So did we have, we have a second? Okay, so floor amendment number second, number seven, I'm sorry.
Point of order, I think, Ms. Nyar.
Madam Vice President, I just wanted to clarify, we don't need a vote on his, change to the amendment, just the amendment. Okay, okay.
I wasn't voting on it. I was just clarifying it. Thank you. So floor amendment number seven, if there's no further discussion, then all in favor, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Counsel Penya? Did we lose her? I didn't hear her. Counsel Penya, are you still on the phone? Looks like we lost her again. Okay, so based on the counselors that are here, you've got the vote? Okay. So we are moving on to floor amendment number eight, and this is also Counsel Benton.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. This reads on page six, after line 11, insert the following. Complete a fiscal impact analysis to determine the level of funding required to implement a full-scale, effective urban forestry program, including staff positions, operating expenses, and capital equipment costs. Submit a report to the city council by the end of the first quarter of FY 20.
Second.
This is in Parks and Recreation. And Madam Vice President, this, I know that Director Simons did a lot of work on this already, and we really, really appreciate his initiative on it. There was an intention, I think, again, during the budget process to try to make this program more robust. So we just would like to understand exactly what that would look like, and going forward, having, being able to fund a, a more complete urban forestry program. We do a great job with what we have, but we could certainly use some more horsepower attacking that problem.
Any comments, Counsel? I would like to make a comment regarding this. I think it's really important, especially since our Bosque area, and a lot of our trees are dying in that area. And I, you know, to replace as many trees as possible, it's really important for our air quality and so forth. So I think, I think this is a very good objective, and I, I completely support this. So all in favor, councils, signify by saying yes? Yes. Any opposed? Okay, and Counsel Penya is, she's back on the line. Counsel Penya, we are on floor amendment number eight regarding urban forestry. I didn't hear your...
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we are moving on to floor amendment number nine, and this is also Counsel Benton.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Floor amendment number nine reads on page five, after line 20, insert the following. Develop and propose a three-year funding plan to complete, for complete replacement of obsolete park irrigation systems. Submit a program, a proposal with recommendations to the city council by the end of the second quarter of FY 20. Include projected operating savings and reduction in water waste fines. That's under Parks and Recreation.
Is there a second? Counsel Sanchez?
I'll second that. And I have one question. Do we have an estimated cost on what it's going to cost us if we get this done within a three-year period? I know it's been a priority for a long time, and, you know, I think the oldest park right now is Heights Park. It's 81 years old, but the irrigation system has not been changed out. Do we have an estimated cost?
Director Simon?
Good evening, counselors. Typically, to replace an irrigation system... Typically, to replace an irrigation system has been running us between about $80,000 and $90,000 per acre. So if you use that metric and the number of acres listed here in the amendment, Counselor, you're looking at between $9.8 and $11 million. Could be higher, could be lower, but I doubt it'll be lower.
So we've got one more bond cycle with the CIP issues. Are we going to be able to put $9.8 million in this next bond cycle to cover the cost of this objective?
Vice President and Counselor Sanchez, I believe that's up to you. I, you make the final decision on the GEO bond package.
You know, we increased the bond package, the CIP bond package, to close to, what was it, $129 in the end? And there were so many needs within the city, you know, the needs definitely get left out because of the requests, but that's a lot of money, and to try to get it done within three years, it's pretty optimistic.
Can I hear from the administration regarding this, please? Because I have kind of a similar question. I mean, I fully support what Counselor Benton is trying to do here, but I'm concerned that, you know, we're not going to be able to meet this objective.
Madam Vice President and counselors, I think that Director Simon is fairly accurate, right? We have a lot of parks that need to get, if you will, get the irrigation systems, you know, redone, if you will, and upgraded and up to code. And, you know, just given the nature of the last conversations we had over the GEO bond program and all the priorities that you all have at the administration had, it strikes me as a three-year plan is extremely aggressive. It may be worthwhile to have a study done and then come back and have a conversation as to how we implement the plan going forward. Although this, you know, a three-year funding plan may not be the right number, but we might be able to at least give you a perspective of what that looks like.
Counselor Benton?
Yeah, so I think it's important when we look at these to look at the operating savings and the reduction in water waste fines that we would have, so that we can really get a sense of these. I know that Director Simon's probably aware of those as well. I think the important, maybe we need to say three-cycle, but that seems not aggressive enough, you know? Maybe a two-bond cycle plan. But I really feel like this has been on our radar screen. I've noticed that at least for going back for several bond cycles, now that we knew we were dealing with this and we knew we were paying out a lot of money to the Water Authority and, of course, just operating expenses of trying to keep these old systems in place. And there is savings. When we talk about capital improvements, we need to calculate savings as well, so.
Counselor Vice President Borrego, Counselor Benton, I just wanted to add that there may be other sources other than the GEO bond program, and we can look at that as part of the development of the plan. We see this as a sustainability issue, and there are places to go for money for that. We know there are a lot of unspent funds in some of the water project funds at the state level that we've never tried to go to for this type of project. And we could also partner with the Water Utility Authority, who tends to have a little more cash than we do. So I think there are lots of things that we can explore, and if we set up, develop a plan for three years and it looks like it's too aggressive, then we'll just spread that out over longer. But I think all you're asking us to do here is develop a plan, and that's feasible.
Counselor Davis?
As usual, Ms. Nyers beat me to the punch, and I think that's exactly right. I think three years is fine. It reminds me a little bit about the conversation we had a few years ago about solar. We passed a low budget, or sort of a low mark for us, that said by five years, we want to get to this. And as it turns out, when we got started and actually figured it out, we found that we could finance a lot of it by cost avoidance and some outside sources of dollars that we didn't know were on the table. But we needed the plan. As it turns out, getting that ball started four years ago is getting us to 100% four or five years later, as opposed to what we thought was going to be a 20-year plan. So I think it's aggressive. Water is an issue we've got to deal with, and I agree, there's a lot of, there are a lot of resources out there if we put our minds to it. And honestly, we've sort of not taken this on, because it's always been a big number every year, and we just didn't know where to start biting on that apple. But let's put a plan together. That doesn't hurt us at all, and it's one we should do as a responsible city, anyway.
Counselor Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So many folks here may remember, I don't remember how long it was exactly, but maybe three or four years ago, there was an article in front page of the Journal about how the irrigation systems in parks were very old and very leaky. And as I recall, Montgomery Park, which is my district, was one of the worst offenders. So what we have done is we have secured some capital outlay this year. So I'm hoping that the director will help us put that capital outlay to good use and replace that part of the irrigation system in Montgomery Park, so that we, you know, don't waste water and so that our park benefits from good coverage. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson. I wanted to mention, Counselor Gibson and I were talking, I was suggesting that we also look at other options like gray water or things that could be available. Explore other options where it's appropriate. And I know that's not part of this, but possibly a friendly amendment, Counselor?
Yeah, you know, definitely modernization of these systems, I think, is something that parks is always looking at. And my understanding of the gray water availability is it's not citywide, not available citywide. So the particular parks that are the oldest ones may or may not have it available, but certainly, you know, I think that's something that we ought to be looking at when we do look at complete replacement.
And I would just suggest that after the first sentence, we add something to the effect of possibly explore other options where available or appropriate. Does that sound...
That's fine, that's a friendly amendment.
Okay, so I would make that into a friendly amendment, and I don't think we have to change, we don't have to vote on that, right? Okay, he sounds like he's agreeable.
Madam Vice President, I just want to confirm what we're changing here, so.
We're adding Objective Six. Develop and propose a three-year funding plan for complete replacement of obsolete city park irrigation systems and explore other options where available and appropriate.
Explore other options for funding that are available?
No, for gray water, other alternatives.
Oh, other alternatives, yes, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No? Counselor Penney?
Madam Vice President, we need to call Counselor Penney again. I'm sorry, just give us one minute.
We have to call Counselor Penney again? Okay, so we are on floor amendment number 10. And Counselor Benton, as soon as we get her on the phone, would you like to explain this? Thank you. We're on floor amendment number 10, and we have Counselor Benton to explain.
Floor amendment number 10 would read on page five after line 20, insert the following, Objective Seven, "Complete a study of grade and/or pay increases for Metropolitan Redevelopment Agency positions necessary to make them more competitive for recruitment purposes versus other government and private entities, including a focus on those persons with real estate experience or related certifications. Provide a report to the city council by the end of the second quarter of FY '20."
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, any opposed? Counselor Penney?
Yes.
Okay, we are on floor amendment number 11, and this is also Counselor Benton.
I'm not going to move this amendment. Madam Vice President, I want to discuss this further with the administration going forward.
Okay, so we're withdrawing floor amendment number 11. So that would be K. So we are going to floor amendment number 11, which is L. And this is Counselor Harris, and Counselor Harris has left. So is someone prepared to discuss this? The administration?
Yes, Madam Vice President, this was at the administration's request, so I would invite Director Carol Pierce down to walk you through the purpose of this.
In the interim, Madam President, I just move this amendment.
So Counselor Davis has moved this amendment. We need a second. Second by Counselor Sanchez and Director Pierce, would you like to discuss this?
Yes, thank you, Vice President Borrego and council members. Yes, we would like to add these three objectives that are really central to the work of Family and Community Services Department and are reflective in this, the budget that was passed this year, FY '20 budget. So Objective Seven that we're asking is to expand the number of households formerly experiencing homelessness and being housed through housing vouchers with case management. So that was a piece of the budget, as I'm sure all of you recall, there's $2 million in there that is non-recurring. I think we've had so many discussions here about homelessness and how it's important that we address this as a community, and there's two ends to that. One is the emergency shelter that we're working on, but the other end is housing, and we want to really work both ends of this to address these needs in our community. So we wanted that as an objective and to report on it because we think it's really quite important. The second one is, as we're expanding access to the West Side Emergency Housing Center, what this objective, how we've worded it, it just really recognizes that that's now open year-round, 365 days a year, that it shelters 300 adults and children, and that we're working quite rigorously to add community partners out there. Even as of today, Deputy Director Gilbert Ramirez was out there with a variety of partners, including Amity and several others, because we've got some space that's been remodeled to have services out there. Similarly, I'll just add, because I'm quite excited about this, especially with all the discussion on our, all the down-and-out calls and the 911 calls that FIRE has, is that we recognize a problem several months ago about 911 calls out to the West Side Emergency Housing Center. We don't want that to happen. We don't think that's a good use of resource. And so now we've had UNM Health Sciences Center out there about four times, if I'm counting correctly. They're out there on Mondays and Thursdays. They're using our remodeled medical space. This is through a partnership without exchange of resources to really be there to address the needs, and we have averted many 911 calls. We're tracking that. Had a discussion today with Loveless, they're ready to be at the table as well as Presbyterian. So we're excited to add those resources out there because we think that's what's needed to really connect people who are homeless with resources. So I get pretty excited talking about it, but we think that should be an objective because it's important and central to our collective city work. And the last one is, that was passed in this year's budget, which we're very grateful for, is to create this public health initiative that will look at broad public health goals. This was really in collaboration with the Environment Department, and we'd really like that to be front and center as an objective as we move forward. But I can...
Questions of Ms. Pierce? Counselor Benton?
Thank you. Director Pierce, you just made me think of something that was in place. I don't know if it still is. It seemed, and maybe Director Sanchez knows about this as well, but we, for a while, had a, and I'm not sure who was providing this, like a nurse practitioner, I believe it was, coming to the main library downtown and helping folks. I don't know if anybody knows what became of that or whether we still have that program.
Vice President Borrego and Counselor Benton, I could speak a little bit, but I would always invite my colleague forward to help me out here. What I do know is that in our downtown library, there has been a contract with Healthcare for the Homeless, and that's been really important because folks have gone there, they're seeking service. I mean, one thing we do know is because of libraries have bathrooms, they have computers, we also have a small contract through Family and Community Services, and that is often where this person meets constituents, is the downtown library, because that's where folks are going. And it seems to have worked, but I will turn it over to my colleague.
Director Sanchez?
Vice President Borrego, Counselor Benton, I do not know of that specific program. I know that we have a lot of different community members and community organizations that come to our libraries regularly. We're expanding a partnership with Burnley County Mental Health Services at Central and Unser in this next year, so there are a lot of services that come in. I don't know about that one specifically. I know that we've had a lot of success with our contract with Healthcare for the Homeless in the main library, and that has actually reduced significantly the number of calls that were made from main library to APD. So that's been a huge success for us.
Thank you.
Any, Counselor Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. One of the things that I do not see in the objectives, and I know the county is working on this as well as the city, is a crisis resource triage center. What timeframe are we looking at in getting the triage center completed? I know that they're going to do it at a smaller scale, the county, but, you know, I know that the mayor and this council has been looking at that for some time now. Do you have a timeframe?
Counselor Vice President Borrego, Counselor Sanchez, the, as we understand it, the county just received their licensure for a crisis stabilization facility as of, I think, earlier this week or last week, and so they are in the process of developing that timeline. I don't want to speak for them, but I think we've got a good understanding and cooperation that they're sort of taking the lead on that side while we take the lead on the homeless side.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are calling for the vote on this final amendment. All in favor? Counselor Jones, do you have a question?
I would like to move R. 139 as amended.
Okay, do we need to...
Okay, we have one more amendment.
We have...
Oh, I thought we did.
No, we haven't voted yet.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, Madam Vice President, we just need a vote on Amendment 11.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, so all in favor? Signify by... Yes, any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. So we are back on the original bill, and Counselor Jones?
Thank you, I'll do it one more time. Move R. 139 as amended.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Signify by saying yes, yes? Any opposed? Okay, so that passes. So now we will move on to our final item, which is R. 140. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. R. 140 is establishing the City of Albuquerque's Administration of the Group Self-Insurance Fund for Providing Medical Coverage for Employees Under the Participating Entities, creating a new Group Self-Insurance Fund, 7/10 in fiscal year 2020. I move a due pass, and then I would like the administration to speak to this.
Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Ms. Nyers?
Thank you, Counsel Vice President Borrego, Counselor Jones. We understand that the city has talked for a long time about moving to self-insurance, and I think we're really excited that we were able to come up with a proposal that works for everyone. I'm going to invite Mark Sais from our Benefits Division to come down and talk about any details, questions that you may have. But we're already experiencing the savings in the current fiscal year as the quote for the self-insurance plan came in, I think about $5 million less than the one for the full insurance plan. And as we've repeatedly tried to explain and will continue to do outreach to employees, there should be no change from the end user's perspective. They will have an Express Scripts rather than the drug coverage that we have right now, which I hope they'll enjoy because you can get it through the mail, and sometimes it's a little bit easier. But other than that, there should not be a change from the end user's perspective. And I just invite Mark to add anything.
Mr. Sais?
Vice President Borrego, counselors, no, just to echo Ms. Nyers' comments, no, there should be no change for our employees, our dependents out there. Copayments, deductibles are all staying the same. The providers, their ability to access those providers has not changed in the least. So the only thing that is changing is the funding methodology behind the scenes. And once again, this is in the best interest of the employees, the employer, the City of Albuquerque, and our participating entities.
Any questions? Counselor Winter and then Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So is our provider still going to be press-only, Presbyterian-only?
Vice President Borrego, Counselor Winter, we have access to both Presbyterian and DAVIDA health plan right now.
DAVIDA, okay, great, thank you.
Counselor Sanchez?
So are the providers were not going to be included? So say somebody wants to sign up with Blue Cross/Blue Shield, they will not be able to?
Vice President Borrego, Counselor Sanchez, no, not at this time, right now. Being self-funded, we do get to choose the third-party administrator, for example, Presbyterian or Blue Cross/Blue Shield. We chose Presbyterian Health Plan, but we still can access the same type of providers that Blue Cross Blue Shield has access to as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Winter?
I just want to say, having to deal with the health system, I think, I really think this is going to work, and I appreciate you doing it, appreciate what you've done over there. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
And I will echo that.
Thank you, Counselor.
I, I have an appointment on June 11th for my knee, and that's been, what, two months?
I'm glad you got there.
So it's getting worse. So I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Counselor Penya, thank you. So there being no further business, the city council meeting is adjourned.